All right, if you guys will stand with me, I'll do the pledge of allegiance and Mr. Powell's going to do the invocation for us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Father, thank you for this time. Thank you for the ability that you've given to us. Thank you for the responsibility that you've given to us. And just ask, Lord, that you would just bless us and help us to make the right decisions for the city. And ask you to be with our city leaders, be with our federal leaders and our state leaders. Bless us tonight in Jesus' name. Amen.
Well, thank you all for joining us. I'll call this April 4th, 2017 Planning Commission Meeting to Order. If we could do roll call.
Gary Compton, Roy Covert, Vivian Haney, Shannon Mueller, Peyton Parker, Kevin Parsley, Erin Panado, Brian Powell, Dale Tyler.
Okay. And minutes from last month, any questions or comments?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mrs. Haney.
Second.
Second by Mr. Covert. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And next item on here, public hearing, amendment to the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 130, Amendment, Article 5, Section 20, Unit 17, to expand definition of eating places to allow for limited indoor entertainment presented by Patsy Christie.
The City Council transferred or submitted to the Planning Commission a change in the ordinance in Use Unit 17, which is eating places, to allow for some expanded definitions of what an eating place would be and the things that would be allowed. So we are creating a Use Unit 17A and a Use Unit 17B. There's a new ordinance on place on your desk tonight because it goes back and puts the information about having limited to acoustic music in eating places that are considered to be 17A. So a 17A eating place breaks down and defines what a sit-down restaurant is, what a sidewalk café is, what a restaurant with carryout, and what a coffee house is, and gives specific definitions for each one of those. Each one of those units could have acoustic music but no other, any kind of entertainment. They are allowed as a permitted use in a C1, a C2, a C4, a C5, and a PUD, and as a conditional use in an A1. And it creates a Use Unit 17B, which are eating places where the principal use is the service of food for consumption on the premises and may provide for dancing or entertainment or through an outdoor ordering facility. And it creates a sit-down restaurant, a restaurant with carryout, a coffee house, a restaurant drive-in. It establishes where order boxes, window, order windows, payment windows, and those kind of things can be. And the requirements for variance, they are allowed as a permitted use in a C4, a C5, and a PUD, and a conditional use in a C2. So basically, what we're doing is establishing the capability to have a restaurant that has entertainment and dancing as a conditional use in a C2. So we are allowed to look at the specific case for it before you can have any entertainment or a drive-in facility in a C2. So that's the basic changes. I can read all the words if y'all want to do that, but I think you can read that for yourself. And we've got some copies if anybody's interested or come by the office, and we'll go over the details if you need more information.
Any comments or questions from the audience? Okay, it's to the commission. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Motion to be approved.
Second.
I do have one quick question is that this would be a motion and would go to City Council. If City Council approves this, what would happen with a lot of the existing places and what they need to do in order to get this put in place?
Well, they're grandfathered in as they are today, as soon as the ordinance go into effect. If they want to do, one of these things is allowed now that wasn't allowed before, they would have to come in and apply for that because a Use Unit 17 has been very limited. Like if you have a coffee shop that wants to add a drive-in facility, they would have to, in a C2 zone, they would have to come in and get a conditional use in order to do that.
Okay. This is just providing a way for them to do that?
Right. Because in the past, they couldn't have a drive-in facility at all as a Use Unit 17. Then it would have to be rezoned to a C5, which opens up a whole new array of different kinds of activities that are allowed in a C5 that's not allowed in a C2. So basically, we're allowing those other kinds of activities to happen in a C2 only if it's done as a conditional use.
Okay.
And this really is a motion to approve and submit or send to the City Council with a recommendation for approval. Okay?
And a motion by Mr. Powell and a second by Ms. Haney.
Covert.
Yes.
Haney.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Parsley.
Yes.
Panado.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Passes eight zero. All right. Next section is tabled items. The first tabled item was R. 17-03 Lloyd McCord's 355 Oak Grove and 50, is that 5184? Is this a typo on this one?
Okay, I'll have to look.
Should be 5144, I think.
We know the sound is in the right place, so...
Just want to make sure I get it correct.
It's gotta be here somewhere. I know it is. No, it should be 5084.
5084, okay.
That's the address on the map.
So 355 Oak Grove and 5084 Harbor Avenue from a PUD SF2 and A1 to a C2 presented by Stephen Lyle.
Thank you. If you look at the, at your screens there, you see the property we're talking about. The property furthest to the north is currently A1, and as you see there, it's currently adjoined by a C5 property on the east and a C2 property on the south. I think we have to assume that the other property that adjoins it on the east is eventually going to be C5 as well that has the 48th Street frontage. Then, of course, the C2 zoning property that's there now also adjoins the SF2 property that's there and the PUD. So the SF2 property is already, basically, on three sides has C2 and the PUD, which would allow for some commercial uses. And the SF2 property has got such a little amount of frontage on Oak Grove Road, you couldn't really develop that property to much of its potential without, because of the limited access, there's no way to bring a road into, subdivide that into multiple lots. And the PUD zoning was honestly is kind of an anomaly. I'm not sure how they'd ended up on such a small piece of property there. So the request tonight is to make all these properties consistent, not only with the adjoining zoning that's coming in with the development on 48th and Harbor Avenue. This would make this property consistent with those, and it would also bring it consistent with the city's own land use plan, which calls for this property in particular, in this area of the town, to be commercial going forward with the, with Oak Grove Road serving as kind of the boundary between commercial and residential. Since it is consistent with the plan and consistent with the adjoining zoning, I don't see any issues with it. If you have any concerns or questions, I'd be happy to answer them if I can.
Staff comments?
The adopted comprehensive land use plan indicates commercial use for the area. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies. The comprehensive land use plan is recommended for approval. Improve the city's economic base and tax structure through the promotion of healthy, stable commercial concentrations, assure adequate land allocation for commercial uses, a sufficient size and a proper location, and encourage the development of a wide range of commercial development for the residents and tourists to include neighborhood, community, and regional centers.
Any comments or questions from the audience?
Before you start, there is one letter that was put on your table tonight from Mrs. Thomas, I believe that is the name. Okay. L. Maxine Thomas at 255 Oak Grove Road. I can read the letter if you want me to, but if you'll stipulate, we'll just put the entire letter into the record without reading it. Does anybody want it read out loud?
No. Okay. If you can state your name and address, please.
Yes, Judy Jordan, 391 Remsen Lane, Parker Place subdivision, we have access from Oak Grove Road. We understand the commercial zonings there. There are several concerns, however, from people in the area, and we may voice those with a larger number of people. But I'm here basically to gather information tonight and see how we might go forth working together. The big concern, of course, is that Oak Grove Road is very narrow and very small, and there may be planning to increase that or somewhat. But right now, if you go in early morning or you go from 3:00 to 6:00 in the afternoon, it's bumper to bumper on Oak Grove Road. I just came through it, and it's very difficult to, it took me a long time to get through, make my turn right, go down Elm Springs, get through all the stuff on the bridge now. And that is a very big concern. Also, while I was going through that, there was a school bus in front of me, a school bus behind me, and a school bus making a turn on Oak Grove Road. We've had several accidents since the traffic has gotten so bad from, of course, the new road construction and everything. But we've had, we have lots of students that take Oak Grove Road and Harbor to school. So that area is very, very, as far as safety and traffic, if you haven't done a study, I would urge you to consider that because that is a real concern for us. The other thing being commercial and what it might be used for, if it's going to be used for trucking or for large trucks to be on that road, that road already needs to be redone, I would suggest that you talk to your road department about that and to the safety and traffic people about moving around. And of course, all those things with our, in a small residential area with a lot of small children predominantly, or elderly people in our little area, are concerned about their property values and safety and that sort of thing, as people are coming in and out of the subdivision with all that traffic. These are, I think, legitimate concerns because that road is very well-traveled and it is full of traffic, and I'm here to learn more about it tonight, but I'm supposed to take this back to some of our residents.
Thank you. I'm going to have Patsy read through real quick as far as what is acceptable use units within a C2.
In a C2 zone, the following uses are permitted: citywide public uses by right, cultural, recreational, and health facilities, offices, studios, and related services, eating places, neighborhood shopping goods, other shopping goods, trades and services, automotive services, parking lots, temporary buildings, transportation services, healthcare clinics, and an indoor flea market. The items that are allowed by conditional use are citywide uses by conditional use, utility facilities, recycling collection facilities, a self-supporting tower or antenna, auction houses, temporary classrooms, automobile sales, church synagogue, mobile vending site, commercial assemblies. Those that I just mentioned are ones that they have to come before the Planning Commission before they can be approved. But the first list I gave you is something that's automatic.
Could we get a copy of that?
If you go to the city's website and you look under the city ordinances, it is Chapter 130, Article...
Come right here.
Article 3, 3.4, which is the general commercial district.
130?
Yeah.
There's a copy.
There you go. There's a copy.
Oh, okay, thank you.
And I was just going to say, we do have handouts upstairs of each of the zoning classifications that you can come by the office. Or you can send me an email and we'll send it to you.
Okay. What I'm likely to do, we have several attorneys that do live in the neighborhood, and they asked me to get the information. And what we'll probably do is just share the information with everyone, and then if there are still concerns, they will come forward.
Do you want me to address the traffic congestion issue too?
Yes, please.
The long-term plan of the city is to extend 56th Street from where it is now all the way to Elm Springs Road.
Right.
I think once that is completed, we will see a different type of traffic using Oak Grove Road, school buses, those kind of things. It is, the mayor has indicated it will be included in the 2018 bond program so we could go to construction. The design is pretty well finished. We're ready to move forward with it. We just have to have construction money. So in the very near future, that's one of the major impacts that's being looked at for that area. The extension of Elm Springs Road from where it ends now all the way out to 56th Street is included in that. There will be a roundabout at 56th Street, there will be a roundabout at Harbor Avenue. The construction work on widening out the bridge over Elm Springs Road is slated to be completed before school starts. So some of that congestion issue is going to be addressed. The developer, if this property is developed, they will be required to widen out the portion of Oak Grove Road to the city's master street standard as part of that investment, I mean, as part of their development costs. And it's possible that we could put pieces together and do more of it. We all recognize that Oak Grove Road can't handle the traffic that's out there. But long-term wise, we do have some issues and some plans to help the traffic congestion area in that whole area, so.
The other concern was just simply the scenery and that sort of thing for what we had listed, passed out in the neighborhood, that it might be for storage of trucks and heavy equipment?
Well, now, they can't have outdoor storage of heavy trucks and equipment. That's not allowed in a C2 zone anymore.
Okay.
We do have commercial design standards, so as new development occurs, it has to meet the design standards. We don't allow just for metal buildings. So we have several things in place that can help address some of those concerns.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll take this information back to everyone, and the safety and traffic concerns are things I think you should consider.
The one, Oak Grove Road itself is, does not have any plans as far as any type of improvements to it?
Not that the city's taking on as a...
That was one question that you had on there. The bond would be more towards 56th Street and actually take that traffic off of Oak Grove.
Moving the traffic there. It's closer to the school, you know, it has a connection north and south. The long-range plan is to take 56th Street all the way to Wagon Hill Road to the north and all the way to Johnson Mill Boulevard or Great House Springs Road or wherever it's called now. So it, you know, it moves traffic back and forth across the region, not just, which is a lot of that traffic there, too, so.
Okay, I'll take this back. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Yes, sir.
Thank you. I'm Jim Thomas. My mother is Maxine Thomas. I'm the person that sent a letter to the commission that Patsy referred to. Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you tonight. We're here to ask that you reject the zoning, the proposed zoning, simply because of the, we understand that the area is zoned right now, or is in the long-term plan, is for it to be zoned as commercial. Understand that, but the, I think, and we understand the I-49 corridor zoning and all that kind of stuff, the biggest issue that we have is that there's no plan put forward, and understand the petitioner does not have to state what the plan is, how they plan to use the property or anything like that. So consequently, we're left with, okay, how's it been used by the same property owner at this point? And the problem right now, my mother has lived there for the last forty-some-odd years. It was not zoned when the C2 usage came in, so when the city came out, as my understanding, when the city came out and zoned the area, it was grandfathered in as C2. So we didn't have any choice about how it was used at the time. We're concerned today about how it might be used as it goes forward in the future if you choose to make these two properties C2, as the nearby property is. Mom lives at 255 Oak Grove Road, which is immediately adjacent on the north side to 355 Oak Grove Road. Right behind, just east of her property, is the C2 that you see there next to the, and I can't, I can kind of point, it's right in the center that the attorney was talking about. That has been used for several years as semi-trailer trucking, maintenance, trailer maintenance, storage. You know, I sent, in the letter that I sent out, I showed old equipment that's stored out there. There's roll-off boxes stored and has stored along the north end, right immediately east of 355 Oak Grove Road. Right now, today, I've got a picture on my cellphone for anybody who wants to see it, there's old road graders out there. A couple of months ago, when this was first planned, there were some utility trucks out there. Those were temporary, understood that, but they were really an eyesore. And the problem is, is that over the last several years, the property has been an eyesore because of appearance, because of the storage of stuff that has been out there, dust and noise from trucks and heavy equipment moving in and out and all that kind of stuff. Our concern is that if this, if you approve this tonight, Lloyd McCord can't, Inc. can use the entire property, put in an access road onto Oak Grove Road, make all-weather road, allow them to better move equipment trucks, semi-trucks, and roll-off boxes and all that kind of stuff in and out from access from Harbor with a straight-through shot onto Oak Grove Road. That's one issue. And we've got to, you know, and I think the biggest issue is we're concerned about, we understand the long-term vision that the city has in the plan, but the short-term, and maybe for the next 10 or 15 years, it could be more about what it has been in the past. Right now, it's being used by, I think it's Village Tours, a tour bus outfit that has buses going in and out. And that's our concern, is that going forward, I mean, for me, if I was a business owner and I was going to look for an area to develop as a residential business or something that, like in the plan, I certainly, unless I was going to put in, you know, an oil repair shop or something like that, I would not choose an area like that to put my business. So I feel like, and I think our feeling is, is that if you choose to approve this tonight and they do expand this, they could become a long-term blight on the area and potentially permanent. And, you know, across the street is brand-new single-family residences with over 140 houses.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Mr. Lyle, is there anything that you wanted to address on some of the comments or questions?
Well, of course, the, there is no immediate use of the plan. Mr. McCord lives on one of these properties himself, and the, from what I understood, those issues related to a property that was grandfathered in. And any of these properties, if they were developed, this Planning Commission would have, would come in under the new zoning, which has requirements of restrictions on outdoor storage and a lot of things like that that Patsy and I have been talking about a lot lately. But so it would restrict, whoever does it, whether it's Mr. McCord or a new owner, would have to come in and submit large-scale development plans to the city. They would have to build a new development out in accordance with the currently existing commercial zoning, which I think goes pretty far to protect folks, screening with, you know, between residential properties and commercial. There's a whole host of new regulations that kick in when they, when whoever in the future might develop that would develop it. There's not an immediate plan, but someday, someone will, I feel quite certain. But when they do, this body will do, make sure that the development plans are up to the code and that they, you know, that the new developer adheres with all the protections for folks like your mother that happened to live next door.
Well, I guess with the one comment, and I tried to make this in the letter that I have to that, is why not wait until there's a plan that the community can have a voice in? What is the urgency for make, if there's no plan to do anything with it? And you and I have both, all of us have seen commercial properties out there for sale and sat there for years. That's fine. But in the meantime, there will be some kind of use for it. And I, you know, the question is, why does it need to be done now to, for somebody that buys it in the future to develop it and come back to the Planning Commission?
Well, I can say that the property owner has the right to come and rezonate whenever they choose this in their best interest to do it. If he determines that's today or five years from now, that's not something that the zoning ordinance dictates that you got to rezonate and do it within a certain amount of time. He has the right to come in and request to rezonate. We're looking at, is the zoning that's being requested the highest and best use of that piece of property? And these guys have all heard me say hundreds of times, whatever you consider to be the worst case on that list, if it's acceptable in that zoning classification, it's in keeping with our land use plans, then, you know, that's a reason to rezonate whenever they decide to come and ask for it.
I agree.
And we don't have, I mean, we don't have contract zoning where they have to come in and tell us exactly what they're going to do with it when they ask for it to be rezoned. The SF2 areas, the A1 areas, and the PUD, they can't change those two commercial areas until they come in and file a large-scale development plan. We will know what's going to happen with those. The screening requirements, the lighting requirements, the building standards, all that will have to be met as those properties are being rezoned. The C2 property, the business was in place when it was annexed into the city. It becomes a non-conforming use. If they expand the use of it, then we get into an issue of the Planning Commission has to approve that non-conforming use expansion. And so there are those things in place to help protect that area, too.
Is the, you know, I, roll-off boxes, is that covered under recycling?
They don't have a recycling operation in that the public can bring material there. I don't know what the boxes are used for. It may be used by the business that's already there, I don't know.
But it's acceptable.
Well, if they have a business that has to have a dumpster of some kind on there, yeah, that's acceptable.
Well, I'm guessing that there's probably 100 empty roll-off boxes.
I can't answer that for you because I don't know what their operation is, so.
Okay. I don't have anything else. I think that Patsy said that you should expect the worst of the allowable, the allowable uses. So I guess, you know, I've said as much, as much as I can.
No, what I said was...
Well, I didn't mean to mischaracterize anything you said, but...
What I said was, whatever you consider to be the worst activity that can go on there, if that is acceptable, then the rezoning request is there. I didn't say that we could expect the worst for that to happen. I'm just telling you, that's how we look at, what is the highest and best use for the piece of property.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If you'll just come to the mic and state your name and address, please.
Hello, my name is Robert Fitzgerald, and I live at 396 Milas Street. I live right across from Mr. McCord, and I'm all for the development of Springdale. I was born here, I've lived here all of my life, and I love what Springdale is doing. My biggest concern is that I do live right across the street from this. I have a small child. There are eight children within the cul-de-sac. I think that it might be, I don't even know where we're talking about, I think it might be an SF2. I think I live in the first house with the willow tree. But anyway, I just felt like I got this letter. I grew up in this land. This was my grandparents' land, the canops, and they developed it and I built, and I live in a house there. Like I said, I'm not here to stir up anything, I just am concerned about what I've seen going on over there. And like I said, I don't have anything against Mr. McCord either. I don't know him, I've never met him, but I'm just concerned for what is going in there. I know that there's a long-term plan. I've heard you talk about this long-term plan, but immediate plan is what I would like to know, and I know that's not going to happen, and I understand that. I just am concerned, and I just needed my concern to be voiced, and that's all I have. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, appreciate it. Any other questions or comments from the audience? Okay, it's to the commission? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, just state your name and address, please.
I'm Marilyn Yeomans, and I'm actually Maxine Thomas's daughter. And I'm just trying to understand, and it's just my stupidity, why we would build a complex with 150 houses across the street from where we're going to make commercial, you know, rezonate something to commercial? I just, I don't understand that. So is there, was there a plan? I mean, it seems like if we're going to spend the time and effort to develop and have 150 houses on Oak Grove Road, why would we want to go across the street and make it commercial?
Well, let's look at other areas in the city. If you go down 412, there's commercial along 412, and right behind it is residential development. Some of that's been there a really long time. I mean, and you look around the country, traditionally, you have commercial development that fronts along major streets. that fronts along major streets. 48th Street happens to be this one. Oak Grove creates a good barrier between that and the residential development, but you'll see lots of places all over Springdale and northwest Arkansas where residential is right adjacent to commercial development. And it's the C2 zone. It's not the heavy commercial-type stuff that goes in there. That's the difference than what some of this other is, too.
So if you're looking at that, we have a tendency to refer to, as far as the I-49 corridor, which is a lot of your 48th Street, going all the way up to Elm Springs Road. So you've got the Future Home of Mercy that was up in that way, McAdoodles and so forth on that. All commercial going south would all fall within that type of strip, is kind of where the referencing is similar to 412 and those types of things. And Oak Grove being that buffer, as far as behind that being any of the residential development. I know you may not agree with it, but does that make sense as far as how it's described?
It is, but even on 412, there's a lot of that same as well, along that corridor and that whole piece. The importance is, is how do we make sure that we appropriately plan out and approve as far as those corridors? It's going to be in the best interest as far as for the development of Springdale. And I think what you've seen, it's gone through there as far as with the supercenters and the McAdoodles and the Future Home of Mercy, it's definitely a lot of those developments that are coming in. And, you know, those properties will be very cognizant as far as what goes around them, too, and that whole piece, so.
Could I ask a question?
Yes.
I understand what you're saying, and I understand certainly the corridor and the 56th Street expansion makes sense, that part of that be commercial. And I certainly, having been raised by a banker, recognize the right of people to certainly develop their business and that sort of thing. But I would ask you this, do you all do any kind of impact statement, any impact study on safety and environment in regard to whatever might be requested to be there in your zoning of that business?
Well, usually, those impacts come in when we have the development proposal. We have been known to ask for traffic studies to see the impact on the traffic area of that. They have to do a drainage study to see what impact the development will have on stormwater in that whole area. And it can affect any of the adjacent properties. We sometimes, well, they have to provide a lighting plan so that we can see that there's not light pollution to adjacent property owners and those kind of things. So as far as those are the kinds of things, and then water and sewer, each of the plans are submitted to all the utility companies. They get a chance to comment on those kind of things, too. A formal study on all that is not always presented, but we have that kind of information when we look at the development proposal itself. The rezoning is just to determine what is the highest and best use of this piece of property with those parameters of what is allowed, and then the actual impact of whatever is the proposed development, we look at that when we get that development plan itself.
Okay. I think we've expressed considerable concern about the safety and the transportation aspects of it, as well as the social aspect with families and that sort of thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, it's to the commission.
You know, I just would like some clarification. I think from what I'm hearing, the big concern is that the current business would be expanding, but the current business would not be allowed to expand under the current, is that correct?
Right. If they were to expand the current business, because now it's not a non-conforming use, they would have to submit a large-scale development plan that shows the expansion. And we would go through the process of that like we do with any other kind of development.
And what they're using it for is not allowed in a C2 today?
That, I'm not sure I know exactly what all of it's being used for, but it's not allowed in a C2 zone. So it, you know, it got grandfathered in because it was in operation when the C2 zone was changed.
So the C2 businesses that would come in would be different than what that is?
That's correct, yes.
I think your question, too, is, is that what they have there, regardless of whether we approve it or not, they can still operate those businesses?
Yes.
That's not going to change.
The business that's already there, they can't make bigger, but...
Can I ask a quick question on that to expand a little bit, Viv? So if there is a business that is currently there, we're saying that it was there before, it was zoned to C2, rezoned, that business would have to have a business license currently, an active business license?
I'm assuming it does.
Or would we say a business that is there that doesn't have an active business license could not be a non-conforming use?
I, that sounds like a city attorney question, but I would assume so, because I think they have a business license at that location. I know they have a business license. Been there a long time.
Yeah.
I don't know exactly what it is, either.
We have a couple of businesses there. I think there's a dumpster business, a rental business, and then there's a landscape business also, but then there's, we're talking a different...
The landscape business is not on this piece of property?
No, it's a little bit further.
It's further to the north of this one.
There's, behind the C2, directly behind the C2 on what's the agary now, I believe there's dumpsters. And I think that's what the residents are talking about now, is, I think that's their big concern, is that right behind that C2 that is in the agricultural zone is some kind of, there's a numerous amount of dumpsters. So I just, that was the question.
Can you address what those are?
No, and I can't because, you know, that's, we're talking about a different property than what we were here for tonight, so I didn't...
No, what I'm hearing is the property just north of the C2, see where that road comes across?
Right there.
Is that being used as part of the current business?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. I didn't think it was either, but I didn't go out there and measure it either.
You'll go to the mic. Yeah, if you'll go to the mic, I don't know.
I've seen aerial photographs with the dumpsters, roll-off boxes, whatever you will call them, entire length of that property.
Were they there today?
Plus up north of it.
Okay, I don't know that they were beyond the C2. I can't address that issue, so.
That's A1 right now, right?
It's A1. The property to the north of it is A1, right.
I guess the drive is okay, because it's just a dirt drive.
I mean, it provides access to that 307 and to the backside of that piece of property, yeah.
I guess that was kind of my point earlier, is the rezone, I think, would probably help protect people. You would have, if you look at the patchwork we have now with an A1, an SF2, and a PUD, and no consistent way to develop those properties, going forward, if it's C2, then you'll have a consistent, you'll have consistent restrictions on the use of the property, consistent development standards that would, that should alleviate, you know, any further problems and get a consistent development going forward.
Is Oak Grove Road a know-through for large trucks?
I believe so, because I think our truck routes are limited to numbered highways.
Right.
So they'd only be there if they were making deliveries or coming to a place of business. Truck routes only are those who are traveling through the city. You can't use them just to travel through.
So if this does get approved, that may be, because I heard some concerns of larger traffic, of larger vehicles going through there. I know school buses, all that stuff go through there now, but I did see two buses back on that C2 property, and I did see those dumpsters that they were talking about back there also.
Are they that far back?
They are. There's several of them.
We may need to get code enforcement to go out and look at that and see, because that's an A1 area, and that wasn't part of the original business location, I don't think, so we may have to get that, to getting that outside storage, outside the original proposal, too, so.
But that would be more of an issue with a non-conforming use than it is...
But, you know, that is a total issue than what we're really talking about tonight, so...
Any other questions, comments from the commission? It's going to be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Mrs. Haney.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
The rezoning passes 8-0.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the 25th.
Thank you. Next item, R-17-11, Arturo Martinez, lots 9 and 10, Jack Straight, First Edition, from A1 to SF2, presented by Arturo Martinez.
Thank you. I'm Arturo Martinez, and I'm here to answer any questions that you've got about.
Okay.
My rezoning.
Staff comments?
The adopted comprehensive land use plan indicates median-density residential use for the property. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan is recommended for approval. Protect the positive aspects of neighborhood character throughout the city. Appropriate locations for single-family and multifamily residential development should be provided based on accessibility. Assure adequate allocation for residential purposes by providing lots of adequate size.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? It's to the commission?
Call for vote.
Call for vote by Mr. Powell.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Rezoning passes 8-0.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the 25th.
Next item, R-17-12, First Security Bank, that one is tabled, is that correct?
This project is being tabled, the rezoning that is on the agenda, as well as the large-scale development, to give the developer an opportunity to come and meet with the council, with the planning commission at the next work session to look at this project. It's kind of a unique project, it's a unique piece of property, and we want to look at some possible, they're asking for some variances. We want to make sure there's a good understanding of this project before we move it forward. So we need to put it on the agenda for the work session in this month, okay?
Next item, lot split 17-02, Mark Drake, I'm sorry, east and west side of Urban-McGarry Road, and south side of Phillips Road, presented by Mark Drake.
Good afternoon. I'm Mark Drake. I am an attorney from Bentonville, and I represent Joseph Grau, who's trustee of the Maureen Grau Trust. We're here today for a track split. Also with me is Mr. Jason Duff of Satterfield Land Surveyors. Just as background, this property is owned by the Maureen Grau Trust. The trust is now in a position where it is to distribute its assets. One of the assets is this piece of ground, which is roughly 77 acres, and according to the terms of the trust, the property is divided equally between the three beneficiaries of the trust. So that is why we are here today, asking that this property track split be approved.
Staff comments?
Debbie, did we get the authorization form for them to make the representation? Did you have an authorization?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. And we have the trust documents that shows who are the trustees of the piece of property, because we have it listed as being Mark Drake. Is he one of the trustees, or is...
No, I'm the attorney. I represent the trust.
Okay. The reason I ask these questions is we've got to make sure, we've got the right person standing up there asking for these things before we move forward with that.
I actually faxed in two authorization forms, one from...
Yes, she did, he did. I remember that, ma'am.
Okay, then we're good. All comments from the utility companies and other city departments must be addressed prior to approval. Remove the certificate of acceptance, these are never required for a lot split. Remove the certificate of transmittal. A waiver from the subdivision requirements will need to be requested and approved prior to approval for filing? Okay. I'll have to come back and pick that one up. Property owner's name and address needs to be clearly shown on the plat, who is the property owner, and if it's actually now in the trust, that needs to be put clearly on the plat. The following items needs to be submitted, the review fee and a request for the waiver. And Clayton said we got the fee and the waiver, so we need to add the waiver request for a waiver of subdivision requirements, too.
It's on the waiver part, I didn't add it to that part.
Okay, is it on the waiver section?
Yes.
I didn't see it over there.
There it is, 17-08.
17-08.
Okay, 17-08. Okay, so we have all that. Okay, we're getting our paperwork all together. It takes all kinds of stuff to make this work. So we need to approve the waiver of the subdivision requirements, we'll have to go to council, and then the lot split, subject to staff comments. Okay?
Okay, so we're hearing both of the, the waiver, 17-08, Maureen G. Grau Trust, Joseph Grau trustee, 3540 Phillips Road, at the same time on this, okay?
Right.
Any questions or comments from the audience? It's to the commission.
They have addressed some of those comments.
As long as they're addressed by the time we get ready to sign them.
In between us doing those comments and now, they have addressed.
Okay. So when we get down to signing the lot split, if those have already been taken care of, you don't have to address those. We just need to make sure that those things are on the plat. And Satterfield will take care of that, right? Okay.
To the commission.
Which do you need first?
We need the waiver of subdivision requirements to allow that, recommend that to council.
Okay, so I'll make a motion on the waiver. Parents.
On the waiver by Mrs. Haney?
That's really a call for the vote on the waiver.
Okay, call for the vote.
It's really a call for the vote on the waiver, yes.
I've got it right here. I know I'm a little slow.
Oh, that's fine.
All righty. Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Passes 8-0, and track split 17-02, this will be a motion. Motion to approve, subject to staff comments.
Motion by Mrs. Haney?
Second.
Second by Mr. Powell.
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Lot split passes 8-0.
The waiver request will be submitted to council at the April 25 meeting. A staff will prepare the resolution, so it can't be filed until the council approves the waiver. Okay?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, replat 16-08, replat of lots 9 and 10, Jack Straight's First Edition, south of Reed Avenue and east of Highway 265, and I apologize, presented by Arturo Martinez.
We didn't...
So, yeah.
Hi, I'm Melissa Martinez. I'm here with my husband to answer questions about that.
Okay. Staff comments?
Did they do their adjacent property owners notifications and all that? Okay. All comments from the utility companies and other city departments must be addressed prior to approval. The newly created lots do not meet the minimum lot requirements in the A1 district, so we got it rezoned. That should be it.
Any comments from the audience? It's to the commission.
Motion to approve, subject to staff comments.
Motion by Mr. Powell. Do I have a second?
Got a question, just making sure that you received what they sent to you, the surveyors, from the surveyors. They sent a second copy, wanted to make sure you had what you needed.
You have to have an ordinance prepared and submitted to the city, to the mayor's office, by Thursday at noon if you want the council to hear it next Tuesday, because the council has to actually approve the replat. So we've got a little bit more time, even if we're not all here today. We have a couple more days to get all that stuff in before it can go to council.
So we are missing something, or what do we need?
You have to have an ordinance.
Okay.
Prepare the replat for you.
Okay. It's to come by the office, I'll get them up.
Yeah, we can give you a sample replat ordinance, but...
Is that something the surveyors can do, or do they do that?
They can do that for you, yes, if you ask them to, but it has to be done by an ordinance, and it has to be in the mayor's office by Thursday at noon if you want the council to hear it next Tuesday evening. That's the next council meeting, otherwise it can go to the meeting on the twenty fifth if you don't make that.
Well, our rezoning is gonna go on the twenty fifth, so would it be better if they just went at the same time?
You can take them both at the same time, and it's, it may be simpler to do it all at one time, yeah, okay? So we had a motion, but we don't have a second.
Second. Make it by Mr. Covert.
All right, who who motioned?
Al.
Second.
Covert.
Okay. Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Covert? Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes. Replat passes eight zero.
Thank you. And if you want to get a sample of that replat ordinance, just come by the office and Debbie, get your copy that we could paste to put it together.
Do you need her copy of her certified?
It's in there.
Yeah, we'll get all that kind of stuff together, before we get it to council, yes.
And then I'll read both of these next ones together on that, replat seventeen oh two, replat of lots one A, one B, R.L. Hayes, first edition, northwest corner of Velman Dotson, one A, southwest corner of Dotson, one B, presented by Ed. Uh, forgive me if I pronounce your last name wrong. Fransky? Fransky. Um, and then replat seventeen dash zero three, replat lots seven A and seven B, block ten, R.L. Hayes subdivision, uh, presented by Ed Fransky.
Thank you, my name's Ed Fransky, and I'm representing Ray High, he's the owner, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Staff comments?
The only thing that needs to be addressed is all comments from the utility companies and other city departments must be addressed prior to approval. So once you get those all addressed, we're ready to go. Again, if you want these to go to council next Tuesday afternoon, or next Tuesday evening, the ordinances have to be in the mayor's office by noon on Thursday, and I think you already done that.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm sorry, what'd you say about the utilities?
There is, there were some comments that were submitted, all of those need to be addressed before you get final approval. I'm the last person to sign, and I won't sign till all of those have been addressed.
Okay.
Okay?
Any questions or comments from the audience? Okay, to the commission?
Motion to approve, subject to staff comments.
Are we doing both of them together?
That's fine with me.
Fine. Motion by Mrs. Haney? Second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Covert.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Replats on seventeen oh two and oh three pass eight zero. Thank you. Thank you. Next section, rezoning, R seventeen dash fourteen, Isabella Velasquez, nine ninety West Sunset, from C two to C five, presented by Jose Silvar.
Hi, my name is Jose Silvar, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay, staff comments?
Okay, your request is to rezone that piece of property so that you can have music at that location.
Just karaoke, yes.
Okay. The changes that we just approved that are going to council to allow that as a C two zone, you can come back and apply for that as a conditional use in a C two, C two zone rather than rezoning the property to C five. It goes to council next Tuesday evening. I I'll give you my recommendation, and then we'll come back and talk about it. The adopted comprehensive land use plan indicates commercial use for the property, the rezoning request is not in keeping with the comprehensive land use plan, and it is not recommended for approval. Proposed changes in the zoning regulations when adopted will allow for the proposed use to be a conditional use in the current C two zone. And the reason being, it's one of those areas that back up to a residential development, and rezoning it from C two to C five adds a whole bunch more uses that's not allowed. And we just gave you an opportunity to do it without having to rezone it to C five. So, you can have this zoning request acted upon, or you can ask for it to be tabled and file your conditional use to see that you can have what you want to do in the current zoning classification.
Okay.
The choice is yours.
Okay.
Which way do you want to go, do you want this rezoning request to be heard tonight? Or do you want to come back and just ask for a conditional use for that, at that location?
Now, right, I want to do it now, mm-hmm.
I'm sorry?
I want to do it, I want to do it now.
Okay, you want to have the rezoning request?
Yes.
Okay.
Are we?
Okay.
Are you sure you understand what Patsy's saying?
Yes.
If it gets turned down at the C five, he can still come back and ask for the conditional use. Yeah. Doesn't keep him from doing that, and if council doesn't overturn the decision, he can't come back and ask for a C five for another year, so.
Okay. Okay, uh, comments from the audience?
Danny Wright, Springville Police Department, I would reiterate what Patsy's passed on. Changing this to a C five would allow for a lot more uses to include nightclubs and bars, uh, which would not be conducive to this area, given the, given the demographics in the residential area. So, I would suggest that we proceed with a conditional use under C two, if this is approved, that the new ordinance is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the audience? Okay, it's to the commission?
Call for the vote.
Call for vote by Mrs. Haney?
Tyler?
No.
Covert?
No.
Haney?
No.
Mueller?
No.
Parker?
No.
Parsley?
No.
Panado?
No.
Powell?
No.
Rezoning does not pass eight zero.
You have the right to appeal the planning commission's decision to the city council, you have to file with the city clerk's office within fifteen days. Uh, I noticed that you want to appeal the decision and indicate why you think the planning commission's decision was incorrect. And if the ordinance passes tomorrow, next Tuesday night with an emergency clause, you can file for your conditional use to do what you want to do in a C two zone. Okay?
Thank you. Next item, rezoning seventeen dash fifteen, G Mar Properties, thirty eight ten Butterfield Coach Road, from P one to SF two, presented by Gustavo Peña.
Hello, my name is Gustavo Peña, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Staff comments?
The adopted comprehensive land use plan indicates medium density residential use for the area, the rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan is recommended for approval. Protect the positive aspects of neighborhood character throughout the city. Appropriate locations for single family development should be provided based on accessibility, site suitability, utility availability, neighborhood compatibility, and environmental factors. Assure adequate land allocation for residential purposes by providing lots of adequate size.
Any comments or questions from the audience? It's to the commission?
Call for the vote?
Call for vote by Mr. Covert?
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker? Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Rezoning passes eight zero.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to the council on the twenty fifth.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, R seventeen dash sixteen, Eliana LLC, southwest corner of Wagon Wheel and I forty nine, from A one to C five, presented by Mike Fagan.
Good evening, good evening, my name is Mike Fagan, I own this piece of property, I have a building with about eight thousand square feet. My business, all audio visual, is in the south, two thousand square feet. I've owned the building for about fifteen years, uh, when I moved my, when I moved the business into the building, I went ahead and made an offer and bought the building. The same tenant has been in the building the whole time I've been there besides me, an interior design company. And they have recently decided to move into a smaller location, and so I now have a new tenant that would like to move in there, fortunately. And uh, the change in the type of tenant is what is the reasoning for this rezoning request. My understanding, the the new tenants are a golf cart company, and they would like to display a few golf carts out front, understandably. So people going down the highway will know that it's no longer an interior design company, but it's a golf cart company. So, uh, that one part of the change is, as I understand it, is the only reason I'm gonna need to rezone, but that's why I'm asking.
The outdoor display.
Thank you, staff comments?
The adopted comprehensive land use plan indicates regional commercial use, the rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan is recommended for approval. Improve the city's economic base and tax structure through the promotion of healthy, stable commercial concentrations. Assure adequate land allocation for commercial areas of a sufficient size and in proper locations. And encourage the development of a wide range of commercial development for the residents and tourists to include neighborhood, community, and regional centers.
Any comments or questions from the audience? It's to the commission?
Call for the vote?
Call for vote by Mr. Powell?
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Rezoning passes eight zero.
Thank you.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to the council on the twenty fifth.
I'll be there, thank you.
Thank you. Next item, R seventeen dash seventeen, Breeden Robinson LLC, north end of Reef Streets, from C two to I one, presented by ESI.
Sir, there's a, we didn't. Variance on that last?
Oh.
Oh.
Eighteen?
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Fagan Lee?
He's back here.
In the back room.
Hey, Mike.
You want to go ahead and do your variance request while you're here, and then, unless you just want to stay longer. Well, they don't, don't do it now, make it what?
I'm glad we got that on record, that this is fun, on there, so. Thank you for catching that, and. So we have a adjustment seventeen dash eighteen for Eliana LLC, southwest corner of Wagon Wheel Road and I forty nine, variance for deletion of paved requirements with a two-year bill of assurance presented by Mike Fagan.
I guess, my main question is, what will need to be paved? You know, that, I've heard different things, you know, this location is in a very industrial area, all of you, I'm sure, have passed by here a million times, you know, right there at Wagon Wheel, forty nine. You know, I've got the, I've got the Sharps Quarry behind me, you know, which I've got a lot of truck traffic, have a lot of truck traffic that turns around in our parking lot. You know, I've got a lot of dust, you know, when I'm, I'm reading some of the requirements that have to do with this new classification, it talks about sealing certain areas to, in a manner that no dust will be produced. It won't matter, you know, if I paved every inch of the three acres, we're gonna have dust. You know, those track, those trucks, the cement trucks. So, you know, that's really what I guess I'm trying to figure out is, because I'm not sure what I'm asking for a variance, because I'm not sure really what, uh, what you would want me to to pave. Now, uh, right now, it's gravel coming in, you know, the ingress and egress on both sides, it's a, it's like a big U, I have, I have two entrances there, um, in front of.
Can you go back to that picture? Can you go back to his rezoning pictures, okay, so we can look in at what you're talking about?
Yeah, I don't know if you can zoom in, uh, on that, and I'm gonna talk to you guys about putting screens up after, you know, at another time, for the clarity, but. In in front of, there we go, okay, you see where where there are cars parked on the south half? You know, there's a concrete slab that currently exists, um, and that's the only thing paved. Now, where the new tenant would like to park a few golf carts just to, you know, for exposure, if you'll, if you look at that and you see where the cars are parked, just to the east toward the, toward the on-ramp, there's just a little sliver of grass. I mean, it, and then it drops off dramatically, so there's not a lot of room there, you know, it wouldn't make any sense to me to to put pavement where there's grass just to park some golf carts. But, you know, that's where they're, that's the only place really visible, and I would like to add that the parking lot's not visible from forty nine. So if we pave it, don't pave it, nobody's gonna really know until they pull in to do business. And you can see where where the entrance to Sharp's Quarry is right across from from our north entrance, and there's a round area there, and that's, they they pull in, they'll, they'll turn around there, you know, dump trucks and heavy trucks. You know, we've, my business has been there fifteen years, that is real solid ground, I mean, it it's, you know, a couple times a year I'll have somebody with a box blade just sort of straighten it out after we have a storm, but it's real solid, uh, you know, what's there now, so.
Do you want to address as far as the area to be paved?
Well, the area that would have to be paved is the drives coming into and going out of the property, and any areas that are, there is parking. And the ordinance says in all commercial, industrial, institutional, and mixed-use districts, all areas intended to be utilized for required paving spaces, a parking, not paving spaces, parking spaces and associated driveways shall be paved with a durable surface, including but not limited to the, to hot asphalt by two minutes of concrete. So your variance would would be not to pave the drives or your parking areas, and with a two-year bill of assurance, you would have to done, have it done within two years, or the business would have to cease operation.
Okay, let me propose this or ask, uh, you know, I can see the parking area needing to be paved. You know, what what I would propose is that I pave the the north part, similar to where the south part is, you know, just where people are walking into the building. You know, if if you drive up Wagon Wheel to Puppy Creek, there are some similar businesses, you know, and I'm not picking on any, but down, you know, like around Townsend Tile and where those guys are down, uh, below on the hillside. Their parking area is like mine, it's when you drive in, it's gravel, but when you pull in front of the business, it's paved. You know, to me, that would be keeping with.
I don't think they're in the city limits of Springville though, are they?
Not sure, but I know that the the paved, the entrance is paved down to a point, and then it's gravel, and then you got pavement up by the buildings.
Right, and and that's how ours is on the north end paved right at the entrance, and and I would not object to paving, you know, the entrance part on the south part. You know, to me, there are two reasons that I would ask for a variance not to pave that. One is the necessity, you know, I don't see the necessity because, you know, neither of our businesses are gonna be high volume, uh, you know, like a restaurant or something, you know. You know, we'll have a few cars a day typically coming and going. You know, the the second part would be just, it's a big expense, it's a lot, a very large area, you know, and anyway you cut it, we're still in an industrial area out here. This is not, it's not Sunset, it's not seventy one B, and as long as that quarry is there, you know, blasting dynamite several times a week, you're not gonna have anything else in in that general area.
So are you asking for a waiver of the paving requirements completely, or are you asking for a two-year bill of assurance?
Well, I would like to ask for a waiver for the drive part, if that is not granted, then I would like to do the two-year bill of assurance.
Okay, so you're asking not to pave the drive at all?
I am.
Which which is both entrances off of the, off of Puppy Creek Road?
Right, you know, I've talked, I've had, or, yeah, off of Wagon Wheel, I've had people say, well, why don't you just pave one and close the other, but I don't know how you would do that, you know, people can't turn around. It, you know, because we do, we'll have occasionally large tractor trailers delivering to us, and they really need that whole thing to turn around, so.
Okay, so your waiver request first is to, you would pave parking requirements, and the area that's required is based on the size of the structure? And it's so many parking spaces for retail space based on that? And how big is the structure?
The structure's eight, uh, eight thousand square feet, I believe it's two hundred feet in length, I think it's two hundred by forty.
Okay, so you would have to pave that area, and you're asking for a waiver of paving the driveway completely?
Yes.
Okay, so that that's what we first need to vote on? He wants to, a waiver of the requirement to pave it, any of the driveway? Or a variance, not a waiver, sorry.
So the entrance to the north, if I remember correctly, is concrete?
Correct, for the first.
Right.
Fifteen feet or something, yeah.
This is the approach into it, yeah, the rest of it is all gravel. The one on the south side, there's no, there's no concrete or anything on that one.
There's not, but when having the other parking or whatever, we end up agreeing on paved, I'll go ahead and have that paved similarly, because I've had an issue with it washing. It it's when you pull out, the tires kind of make it real rough, so I don't have, you know, a problem with that.
So you're on the south, is that the south entrance you're talking about?
Yeah, yeah, I'd like.
So you'll match up the south entrance like the top entrance?
Right.
North entrance?
Right.
Can we spend some more time, just really, not tonight, but I don't know that I have a comfort of, I mean, I'm hearing several different things from you in this whole piece. I mean, if you're willing to do a certain amount of paving on this, I would like to see a little bit more as far as what does that look like in that whole piece?
Well, can we zoom back?
I don't want to sit here tonight and design it all out and so forth, but.
Well, if we can zoom in, I think I can describe to you, because, I mean, it it's, it matches, basically, there's a sidewalk that runs.
The the problem that you're gonna run into as well, there's gonna have to be some draining requirements, you're gonna have as far as the parking requirements, I mean, we need to make sure that that's clearly all defined, uh, within this whole space here as well.
I think what Kevin is asking, can we table your variance requests till next month, and we come up with a drawing, so we all know exactly what you're asking for, what you're gonna pave, what you're not, and and those improvements, how about that?
That sounds good, the the one issue here though is I have a tenant that is wanting to move in immediately. And they'd like to display the golf carts out front, so, I mean, I I don't want this to affect their ability.
Well, the zoning has to go through before you can do that to start with, and that won't be till the end of the month, so how soon do they want to move in after that?
Um, well, they'd like to move in immediately, but not display the golf carts, my understanding, I do have a letter that you were copied on with, uh, with a city attorney saying that as long as they don't display any golf carts, they they're okay now.
Okay, well, that that won't, that won't change any of this.
Okay.
That won't change any of that at all.
Okay. Okay.
So, first of all, I'm going to apologize for the dark glasses. I had a shot in my left eye this morning, and it's a little aggravated. Jim Reed, Springdale City Council, and Mike's in my ward out there. Folks, I, I want to tell you that if he's willing to pave the front of this building, I think we're looking at a great improvement over what we've got out there right now. I would love to see him be able to get this and do that and get this, this company in there so that we can start realizing the tax benefit from the city.
Yeah. Jim, I don't have a problem with that. It's, I think that that business can still move in. They just cannot put those, those golf carts out there right now. But let's do things that's most economical for him, and also meets as far as what the city requirements are. I mean, I, I think we can actually work this out, but I don't want to spend the time tonight to really design all of it out and, and not have good clarification and be an issue down the road in that whole piece. I think if we just take a couple more days and so forth and do that right, I, I think it's something that's much more presentable to this group, that we feel more confident as far as what we're, we're voting on.
That work for you?
Okay. That, that sounds fine.
We got the rezoning going through.
Okay.
Illga Council at the end of the month. Come see me next week. There's no hope this week.
Okay.
Call me the first of next week, and we'll work out sometime, and we can see if we can't work this out.
Okay. I'll do it. Thank you. And thank you for letting me move this part up too.
Yes, thank you.
Thank all of y'all.
You're welcome to stay, since you enjoy this whole session on air as well. All right. Back to the rezonings. R-17-17 Breeden Robinson LLC, North End of Reef Street from C2 to I1, presented by ESI.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jason Apple with Engineering Services.
Clayton.
Clayton.
There we go.
We're requesting this parcel be zoned from C2 to I1, and you will see a large-scale development later in this meeting. I'll answer any questions.
Staff comments?
The adopted comprehensive land use plan indicates light industrial warehouse use for the area. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan. It's recommended for approval, encourages development of industries that further diversify and stabilize the city's economic base that are compatible to the labor force, raw materials, and industrial climate, and provides space for new and expanding high-technology industries with low environmental impact, to ensure adequate land allocation for industrial growth, protected from encroachment by non-industrial uses.
Any comments or questions from the audience? To the commission?
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Mrs. Haney.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Rezoning passes eight-zero.
Thank you.
All right. Next section, replot 17-04, replot of lots C2 and B, 4600 Butterfield Coach Road, presented by Angela Hayward.
My name's Anthony Vanderplug. I'm here with Angela Hayward. We're just looking to replot the southern two acres back to the original intent, because we can't use Hunter's Ridge Road for commercial vehicles, so it's pretty much useless to us. So-
Staff comments?
All comments from the utility companies and other city departments must be addressed prior to approval.
Any questions or comments in the audience? To the commission? It's be a motion.
Subject to staff comments.
Motion to approve subject to staff comments.
Motion by Mr. Powell?
Second.
Haney?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Plat passes eight-zero.
If you want this to go to council next Tuesday evening, the ordinance needs to be in the mayor's office by Thursday at noon.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have final plat 17-01 Tyson Heights subdivision, northeast corner of Don Tyson Parkway and North George Anderson, presented by Crafton Toll.
Good evening. My name's Taylor Lindley with Crafton Toll. We're requesting that this be sent to the April 25th planning, or city council meeting. All the utilities are in place. We're just waiting on pavement, and that'll be done next week. And I'm here to answer any questions.
Staff comments?
All comments from the utility companies and other city departments must be addressed prior to approval. There is a list of things that must be satisfied prior to obtaining the planning director's signature on the final plat. That includes the bonds, all those things we talked about-
Yes.
-yesterday. Street names will need to follow the city of Springdale's street naming ordinance. Have you submitted street names yet?
Yes. They should, they're included on the plat. Do I, is there a different way I need to submit those?
Clayton, is there any issue with the street names on this subdivision?
Suffix.
Suffix does need to be changed?
Okay.
Okay. You need to get with the office, and we need to get those corrected.
Okay.
Okay. And as he said, the, the paving is not completed, so this will not go to council until the 25th. If the paving hasn't been completed by then, it will not go to that meeting as well, because that has to be in place before the final plat can be submitted.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
This is a motion, a second.
Motion to approve.
Subject to staff comments. Motion by Mr. Covert, a second by Mrs. Haney.
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Passes eight-zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Large-scale 17-17 has been tabled. The variance has been tabled, but we are also tabling as far as the large scale as well.
Yeah, that's the one we just talked about. We tabled the rezoning too.
And then L-17-11, South Coast baking, north of Sunset Avenue, west of, west side of North Fortieth Street, concept of detention, presented by ESI.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jason Apple with ESI. We're looking to expand the South Coast baking operation approximately 92,000 square foot addition. And I'll answer any questions.
Staff comments?
Three feet of clear width excluding vehicle overhang must be provided as an accessible circulation route. Therefore, the sod block must either be five feet wide or have wheel blocks between the handicapped access point and the doorway. All comments from the utility companies and other city departments must be addressed prior to approval of construction plans. The concept of detention must be approved by the planning commission. The site area of disturbance is greater than one acre. A stormwater pollution prevention plan, grading permit application, $500 fee in accordance with chapter 107 must be submitted to the planning office prior to final construction, approval of construction plans. We do not approve the use of wattle for curb inlet or graded curb inlet protection. Therefore, a note needs to be added that wattle and/or hay bales will not be used in lieu of sandbags, red, big red filter, or any approved equal. Okay? That's a new one. So hopefully I don't have to read them. It's a little bit harder to read.
Any questions or comments in the audience? To the commission? We do the concept first.
Call for the vote on the concept of detention.
Call for the vote by Mrs. Haney.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes. Concept of detention passes eight-zero. Question for large scale.
Motion to approve, subject to staff comments.
Motion by Mrs. Haney. Have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Powell.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Large scale passes eight-zero.
This place must really be, that's awesome.
Yes, more than doubling the size of-
I was fixing to say.
Is more than double the existing building.
Yeah, it's larger than the existing facility.
But they've been here four or five years now?
Briefly.
Probably, has it been four or five? I don't know. Time goes-
That is incredible.
It's probably been five years, yeah.
That's incredible. It's awesome.
That's been vacant for a long time, too, didn't it?
Yeah, it's been vacant for a long time. It's a great use for that piece of property.
Next item, L-17-12 Justice Printers, northwest corner of Huntsville Avenue and Old Missouri Road, presented by ESI.
So this is on the eastern side of the Justice Printers office building. We're adding approximately 9100 square feet to that eastern side. And I'll answer any questions.
Staff comments?
All comments from the utility companies and other city departments must be addressed prior to approval of construction plans. The site area of disturbance is between .5 and 1 acre. A grading permit application and $250 fee in accordance with chapter 107 must be submitted to the planning office prior to final approval of construction plans. Submit a PDF of the drainage report to engineering. If detention was claimed, we would like it to be modeled, but since the increase in flow is nominal, we won't require mitigation of the peak runoff for this particular large-scale development.
We, we submitted that drainage report. It was to, it was on our CD with, to staff and planning and not directly to engineering, but it's, it's available.
Did you get a copy of it off of our CD? If not, we'll get it to you.
Yes, I received a copy of that.
Anything else? Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
Motion to approve, subject to staff comments.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Haney, second by Mr. Powell.
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Large scale passes eight-zero.
Thank you.
Okay. Making sure that there's just this one. L-17-13 Springdale Fire Department Training Center, north side of Turnbull Avenue and east side of Bain, presented by ESI.
So we're, we're adding a, a training facility for the fire department. It's like, Mr. McCallister, if you have any questions for him, or I can answer those as well.
They've all got pictures of it. It's containers that's being put together to create. And I don't know about you, but when we heard containers being put together was a little bit interesting. I think the pictures make it look a little bit more than what we expected. So, all comments from the utility companies and other city departments must be addressed prior to approval of construction plans. There was a note about modified curb. Have you already made that correction? And a drainage report?
Yes.
And it was included. Is the PDF of that on the same thing?
Yeah, and I sealed that and sent it back to Orion this afternoon as well.
Okay. The site area of disturbance is greater than one acre. A grading permit application and $500 fee in accordance with chapter 107 must be submitted to the planning office prior to approval of construction plans.
Anything else? Any comments or questions from the audience? Will this just be used by Springdale, or will there be other cities and so forth that would use it?
Our original intent is to use it in-house. Rogers has one, Lincoln Side has one, but we would always be open to allow adjoining neighborhood departments to use it. And especially during some of the recruit academies, where new hires are going through evolutions and different scenarios and whatnot, I could see a lot of area departments having people here. So I guess answer would be yes, it would be utilized.
Very good. Okay. To the commission?
Motion to approve, subject to staff comments.
Motion by Mrs. Haney?
Second.
Second by Mr. Covert.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Large scale passes eight-zero. Next item, L-17-14 Reef Warehouse, approximately 950 feet west of intersection of Sunset Avenue and North Fortieth Streets, and then B-17-24 variance modification, commercial design standard, presented by ESI.
The commercial design standards go away because we just rezoned it to I1. Okay? So, but they were covering all their bases. In case that didn't happen, we had it all covered. So, all comments from the utility companies and other city departments must be addressed prior to approval of construction plans, and all residential, commercial, and industrial developments submitted after August 30th, 2007, all utility lines and/or cable and said development utilized by electric and/or telecommunications companies shall be placed underground, excluding 12 KV and above. Skip the comments about design standards. The concept of detention must be approved. The site area of disturbance is greater than one acre. A stormwater pollution prevention plan, grading permit application, and $500 fee in accordance with chapter 107 must be submitted to the planning office prior to final approval of construction plans. And that whole comments about waddles is on this one, too. I'm not going to read it again.
So this one didn't have concept of detention listed?
No, it doesn't have it listed on the-
Yeah, I believe it was, it was on there. I believe it.
It's, it's not on the-
Not on the agenda. I mean-
It's not on the agenda, but we need to approve concept of detention. Yes.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
Call for the vote on the concept of detention.
By Mrs. Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Concept of detention passes eight-zero. And then, large-scale motion?
Motion to approve, subject to staff comments.
Motion by Mrs. Haney?
Second.
Second by Mr. Powell.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Co-
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Large scale passes eight-zero.
Thank you.
See, L-17-15 Metal Roofing Sales, that's tabled per staff. Board of Adjustments, B-17-16 Springdale School District, Walker Elementary Media Center, 17-1 South Fortieth Streets, variance for modification of landscape requirements per chapter 56, variance for minimum drive widths and radius design, standards of all existing parking, presented by McGoodwin, Williams &amp; Yates. I'll go ahead and read as far as B-17-17 Springdale School District, Tyson Elementary Media Center, 1967 Chapman, variance for modification of landscape requirements, variance for minimum drive width, standards in all existing parking, presented by McGoodwin, Williams &amp; Yates.
Good evening. Chris Bracken, I'm with McGoodwin, Williams &amp; Yates, and I'm here with Brad Chilcote with Winberg, Deloney, and Davidson. And these are two projects that came before y'all last, last meeting and were approved. And it's just, we felt that the, adding just the library didn't facilitate bringing all the parking around the existing school up to compliance.
Staff comments?
So basically, you're not adding any new drives?
No.
You're not modifying any of the parking lots?
Nor are we adding any classrooms or student capacity to the school.
So basically, they want to leave it like it is, but just add a media center to it. So that's what the two areas is.
Okay.
They would be required to go back and put in landscaping islands in the parking requirements, in the parking lots themselves, perimeter landscaping, those kind of things. And that's the kind of things they're asking for the variance.
Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
Will we take both of these?
Is that good with everyone? Okay. So call for the vote on both of them?
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Mr. Powell.
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller? Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Both B-17-16 and 17-17 pass eight zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Y'all took both of them together.
Want to make it incredibly confusing to you. Have I succeeded on that one?
Oh, we're just great.
All right. Let's see. B-17-19 Walmart Neighborhood Market, 1375 Market Square Drive, variance to increase size of wall sign presented by Sarah Smith with Harrison French and Associates.
Hello, my name is Sarah Smith. I'm with HFA, representing Walmart. We're asking to have additional wall signage to go over the 300 square foot max for this store. I'm not sure if there's already a variance involved on the store, but it currently has 357.60 square feet. We're proposing 362.68, which is a difference of 5.08 square feet. I am open for any questions.
Staff comments?
I don't do signs, remember?
Your favorite thing?
That's my favorite thing, the signs.
Truly, I can't speak to her not there's a variance for the existing signage or not. However, even though it is only five square foot, it is an increase in existing noncommodity. But we do have a precedent on bigger box stores in areas like this of allowing it because it does really fit into character of what they're trying to accomplish. I think y'all have in your packets that show what they're proposing to do, and it certainly meets the intent, I think, of the ordinance.
The percentage of it on the wall space doesn't make it...
The bad part about it, the percentage is limited to 300 square foot or 30% of the wall face, whichever is less. And when you have a very large frontage, like in this case, the store, it really gets minimized there. But like I said, we have done this before for both this company, as well as local churches and other box stores.
Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
Call for the vote?
Call for vote by Mrs. Haney?
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Covert?
Recuse.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Passes with seven yeses and one recuse.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, B-17-20 Sharon Lee, 3165B, Twins County Street, variance for reduction aside setback from eight feet to five feet, variance reduction for rear setback from 20 feet to 10 feet, presented by Sharon Lee.
Yes, I've been a tenant on this property for eight years, and the shed was built seven years ago. And I did not have any knowledge of needing permits or...
Staff?
We're willing to do what we need to do to get it up to code. We can move it, and we plan on painting it.
You can move it?
Yes, we can.
Okay, but you're asking for it to stay where it is? Let me show us this.
If I may, really quick.
Okay.
It's not to stay where it is. She is going to move it to come into where she's asking for these to be. Right now, as we measured earlier today, it's about seven foot off both sides, the rear and the back. Our understanding agreement is you can move it to meet the requested setbacks, and of course, she's going to take care of the exterior as far as painting it and go from there. This was kind of brought to light, if you recall, last month, we had the gentleman on, Chelsea, Mr. Pomador. And when his was brought to our attention, unfortunately, we could see hers, too. And so now here we are.
Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission? Call for the vote? Call for vote by Mr. Covert?
Are you going to take both together?
I'd like to, unless there's a...
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Okay. Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
Thank you so much.
Next item, B-17-21 Autozone, 1945 Butterfield Coach Road, variance for modification of commercial design standard presented by Jeff Karts.
My name is Ray Flake from Civil Engineering Services. I'm here representing Jeff and Autozone, and I'm here to answer any questions that you have.
Do you have an authorization to represent them in writing?
I believe I do.
Okay. Debbie's gonna look.
It's in the non-large scale. This is in conjunction with the non-large scale that we have, which we wouldn't have... I can run upstairs and get it if you like.
But you remember submitting one?
Yuri did. He works with me.
Okay.
So you should have that.
Okay. Can we come back to you in just a minute, let somebody go look for...
Of course.
And I know it sounds funny, but we just got to make sure we got the right person representing these projects before we move forward with it.
Whatever you need.
What's his name?
What's your name?
Ray Flake.
But you're representing for...
We've got one for Jeff.
Autozone.
Yeah, we've got one for Jeff to represent it, but you had to have one from Autozone indicating that you were authorized to represent instead of Jeff.
I'm sorry. Yes, that should have been sent in, so if you do not have it, I'll try to get on an email and get it sent to you.
Want to come back to it?
Yep.
Okay. Who can go look?
He's on it.
Okay. All right, next item, B-17-22 Tyson Food Incorporated, 319 East Emma Avenue, variance for size of sign presented by Springfield Sign.
I'm Mark Wasso with Springfield Sign, here to present a variance with respect to the wall sign. We're looking to return the property to its historical beginning, which was a feed and hatchery business for Tysons. So we're kind of applying for this variance based on the historical significance that Tyson has for Springdale.
You know, I got the pictures of the sign. You know, it's the chicken that was there for years and years, a very classic sign. Mike, you have a comment?
You know, I do, really quick. It's a lovely sign. It certainly meets, I think, the intent and character. The problem we have is the way the ordinance is written. It stops when a sign is cleared at 16 foot in the adjacent grade. It can extend out a maximum of five foot. And of course, this sign's a little over that, but not a great deal. I think the dimensions in there, it's like seven foot. It extends out, and you have another 10-plus feet to the road. You still have substantial amount of clearance underneath the sign as far as sidewalk goes. But that's why we're here now.
And we're widening out the sidewalk in that area. It's going to be at least 12 foot wide there, so we got plenty of space to be able to use that. It is a classic, it is the classic Tyson sign for downtown.
Correct.
And it is the first variance in the new...
The first variance of the new. Of course, now, remember that the form-based code does not address signs yet. Something we got to address in the future. This is a variance to the existing sign ordinance.
Is it an LED sign, or is it just a...
No, sir, it's a neon sign. There's no flashing components or moving components. It's just steady burn neon.
It's that classic look that was there when Tyson's office was downtown.
Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
Call for the vote?
Call for vote by Mr. Powell?
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Clayton's not back yet. Let's see. Oral Street, tables we didn't need, 17-24. Next item is waivers, 1707 Springdale School District, Athletic Fields, corner of Maple and Kansas Streets, waiver of sidewalk requirements of Kansas, and payment in lieu of sidewalk on Maple presented by McGoodwin, Williams, and Yates. This was one that had quite a bit of discussion, I think, in the last city council.
Yeah, it had quite a bit of discussion, that's correct.
And this waiver, the way it's fashioned, is what we believe was the intent of the council at that meeting. They didn't fill the need for the sidewalk on Kansas. They were very interested in the school paying a portion for the trail along Maple, and that's what, that's how we fashioned the waiver.
That's how we have it. The only thing is, I think we want your contractor to do it and us pay you guys instead of us doing painted in lieu of improvements. Is that going to be a problem?
The school district has agreed to talk to the city about however y'all want to do it.
Okay, we can work that part out.
I mean, that hasn't been worked out to this point, I know, but they are agreeable to talk about it.
And I think we've come up where the city's portion of the money's going to come from. Bringing in a contractor to do that little portion of the trail is going to be very expensive if we can get with your contractors, so we'll just deal with those. But this is what came out of the council meeting. This is part of the connection from the Razorback Greenway to the Pride Trail, which will eventually connect Harbor Avenue, Harbor High School and Springdale High School together with the trail down through there. Come down Pleasant Street, come down Maple Street, and get all the way back down to the Razorback Greenway. So this gives us one portion of it that's 10-foot wide as this project develops, so. And we got two council members here that can attest to whether, three actually, we have three council members here that can attest if there's something different that we don't have right. But this is the way we understand all this, too.
Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
So this does away with the sidewalk on Kansas Street. And I do not agree with the council how they did this. I mean, but it is the way it is.
What was your concern?
Well, the biggest concern is, is we're looking at a short area of a trail that the city didn't have money at the time. The Springdale School District had their plans ready to go. We've always had a great working partnership between the city and the school. And so at the time, when that trail could be put in, there could be cooperation between the school and the city at that time. Because normally, our trails are funded through grants, donations, whatever. So the problem at the time during that meeting was a potential of halting this project or moving it back until something was done. Well, then, you're affecting the student population there. So I don't like playing with things like that to where we always have a solution to put a piece of concrete in versus expanding a part of a building, putting a track, and helping our students of our city. And I don't want concrete to come in before the needs of our students. Because what the school district is putting in is very, very needed for our kids. And I just couldn't understand the concept of putting concrete before needs of students. And that's what I took from the proposal at that time. Now, we're going to do a sidewalk on Kansas Street, where we were going to have a sidewalk on Kansas Street. So now, what are we going to do about that?
Well, if Kansas Street gets a sidewalk on it, the city will have to pick it up sometime in the future.
So, here we go.
But if we put the trail along Maple Street, we've eliminated that parking along Maple Street, so it was the trade-off that was discussed at council meeting.
Well, that's, again, I did not agree with them, so.
And so you're okay with a waiver, you just, you struggle with the payment in lieu of piece?
Yeah, it just shouldn't have come to this, but I'm okay with this.
Yeah, I mean, I do want to just make another comment as well that completely agree to your concerns. The consistent, what we have seen consistently from the school district is, whether it's media centers or these new athletic facilities and things like that, sidewalks never seem to be part of any type of funding that they go to the state for as far as to get approval. And so I do have a concern as far as we're not being holistic as far as what is the, and it's putting the responsibility on us as far as to handle those types of situations. My only ask in the future is, of the school district is, is that there is more due diligence as far as the request of the amount of funding needed, so we're not constantly in this mode as far as waivers of sidewalk requirements for schools, for the school district as well. That's my only thing in that whole piece. I understand your concerns is that we were putting at risk a development getting started on that, but I think they would have gotten started anyway in that whole piece. But that's just my two cents on that whole piece. And it's kind of about this, but it's some of the other things that we've seen from the school district as well. So. I don't have a problem with this. I just wanted to make sure that that was on the record of the consistency that I've seen as far as from the school district, so. This would be a call for the vote. Call for the vote? Call for vote by Mr. Covert?
Tyler?
Yes.
Covert?
No.
Haney?
No.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
No.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
The waiver passes 5-3.
And it'll go to council at the end of the...
Which?
Ultimately, the council has to approve.
Yeah, which, not this coming or the next one?
We can do it on the next one if we need to.
Okay.
Debbie, we make note that we take this to the next council? Okay, for next case.
Thank you. Next item, this is other items, large-scale, 16-07 Powell Street Apartments, one-year extension, approved 2016, presented by ESI.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're requesting a one-year extension for this large-scale development. I know there are a lot of new members. I've got copies of that plan, if anybody wants to see that as well.
It was approved in April of last year, so the one-year extension needs to be granted to us.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
I do have one quick question, and it's not about this particular use, because I don't have an issue with extending this one year for the Powell Street Apartments. But do we have any triggers in place that once a one-year is extended once, or twice, or three times, we draw the line, or is it just infinity that we can keep to extend those as long as we...
You're not going to bring you back one more than two years. So we're just telling you, you got to start all over.
Okay.
Basically, you're putting the public to not know what's going on when it takes that long. A one-year extension is pretty much automatic, because construction gets bogged down in that time. Two years is kind of pushing it, but beyond that, I think you ought to have to come back in, because conditions could have changed in two years.
I agree with that, but we don't currently have anything in the system that locks that in.
It only says one year, a one-year extension. We have granted some, a one and a half year, a two-year. This would be a motion to approve a one-year extension of the Powell Street Apartments.
Motion to approve one-year extension.
Motion by Mr. Covert? Second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Haney?
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
Please.
We tableed Autozone?
Yes, because they don't have authorization.
And the last item we had was color scheme change facade of Sam's Club, presented by Patsy.
The overlay district requires that if the change of the facade, a change in the color is made on the facade, it has to come to the planning commission for approval. And Doug is here, if there are any questions. They're proposing to change it from a beige palette to a gray palette, pretty much.
Right.
the planning commission for approval, and Doug is here if there are any questions. They're proposing to change it from a beige palette to a gray palette, pretty much.
Right. I'm Doug Plummer with RHA Architects. We're keeping the stone that's out there now, and Sam's came to me yesterday, and I went to Patsy, and I'm here tonight, so it's pretty quick, but they're wanting to go to a gray color scheme, and this is, I've got color samples here as well, if you want to look at them, but.
My only concern was it has to be compatible with the stone that's already out there, and I think it's, based on what I see, it's very compatible with. I like the look of it myself. I think it looks really clean and crisp. The only other issue that may occur is the canopy maybe orange instead of blue.
It's been decided that they want to go with a blue canopy for right now, so we're going to keep the blue canopy. Gary's here with me, so.
I'm Gary Tally. I'm the staff architect for Sam's Club at Walmart Stores, Inc., and as of five o'clock, they said they were going to stay with the blue.
Okay. I mean, you know, I, I understand the idea of making it orange so everybody knows that that's where you go to do your pickup, but the blue really looks good, too, so we're really just changing the facade color. There are other pictures of what the sides of it look like. You know, it's, it's a great contrast. I think we want Sam's to open, so I don't know that a color change is a really big deal, but it has to come to you guys. And fortunately, they called me the day before so we could get it on this agenda, and we didn't have to wait till next month, so.
And, yeah, that one slide you had up there, the fuel station's going to a gray color as well.
So we need a motion to approve the color change as presented.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mrs. Haney?
As presented.
Second.
Second by Mr. Powell?
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Covert?
Use.
Seven yes, one recuse.
Can you, off the record, tell us when Sam's is going to open?
I don't think announcements.
Darn.
I'll let him talk.
I know, I know. I was just, we're. Okay, we're all very anxious to get Sam's open in Springdale, so I just thought maybe we'd get a little bit more information tonight, so.
Thanks for the help. Thank you.
Thanks for coming out today.
Planning directors reported.
Okay, work session on the eighteenth. We have now three items we need to discuss, the rezoning in the apartment complex that we just tabled for tonight. We have scheduled a presentation by Tom Hopper, who has worked on the CARST study for Northwest Arkansas. There is a small area of the CARST recharge area for the endangered species at K Springs. It's actually in the city of Springdale. And we need to make some adjustments to our drainage criteria manual to address those areas because of the sensitivity of those areas. And Tom will be here to make that presentation and the changes that need to be made to our drainage criteria manual. The area, the city of Lowell has already adopted them. The city of Rogers has already adopted them. K Springs is in the process of, of looking at that. That's the city that has the most impact. If you drive down forty-nine and you see those big detention ponds being put in along the highway department, that's part of that CARST study to, you know, if there's major spills along the highway, it has a way to detain that before it gets into that recharge area for those endangered species. But we have a very small portion of the city that's in that, so that's. And then the other thing was we need to look at the master street plan. There's a couple of proposed changes we want to bring forward to those for y'all to look at as changes to the master street plan. So that would be Tuesday, the eighteenth, at five thirty upstairs.
Okay, anything else?
I don't have anything else, no.
Almost have anything? All right, meeting adjourned.